All right, this is the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Town of Andover Charter Revision Commission. Called to order at six oh five P M. We have present myself, Jody Gross, Carol Lee, Patricia Billings, Jeff McGuire, and Adrian Mandeville. We have one member of the public who's on phone and muted. Could you please unmute and identify yourself for the record?
Hi, this is Shannon Loudon.
Thank you, Shannon. All right. That takes us to item two on the agenda, which is public speak. Attorney Loudon, do you have anything to say to contribute?
The only thing I want to say is I believe you're talking this evening about the position of the town clerk being either elected or appointed. And my two senses to continue to have it to be an elected position. I think that's very important so that more people get a say in the decision rather than leading it up to a few people who might have a beef or be disgruntled with a particular town clerk. I'm not speaking about Carol. Um, so that there are more people who have a say in who our town clerk is going to be, and it's a very important decision in our town. Thanks, and thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your input. If there's no other public speak, any of the members of the commission want to enter public speak or not? If not, then we will move on to item three, which is approval of minutes. Do we have any new minutes to approve? Haven't seen anything. Carol, you gotta unmute.
From last week, once you sent us from last week.
Yeah, I did. I sent them out right after the meeting.
Right after, yes.
Okay. Let me just bring up my copy of that then. Give me a moment. Right, there we go.
Let me know if it'd be easier if I pulled it up and just thumb through it quick for this committee.
Well, you could. Why don't you do that?
Okay, let me just do six eleven. And I'll share screen. Share. And okay, put this aside. The Mac for my friend Adrian over there. Um, uh, basically, we had everyone but Adrian unfortunately couldn't join us. Started at six oh four. We approved the minutes from the prior three meetings and the special meeting.
It's public speak, not public peak.
Ah, thank you.
There we go.
Spelling wasn't part of this job description, I guess.
Well, peak is a word, so it passes the spell test.
Didn't pick me up. Uh, we had discussion and action on the charter review issues. Jeff, uh, really provided us some language, uh, right before the meeting and um, Carol suggested adding some language to what Jeff had or in conjunction with it that Hebron has to, um, to put an item into town, uh, onto a town referendum. Um, if there's some sort of petition or stay. Uh, i- if petitioned to referendum, then ordinance would stay to that referendum to the next town election. And so Jeff was gonna rework some language and send around to the committee. Uh, item B was around referendum voting. And again, trying to have some alignment with the Board of Ed and budget timing with Hebron. Carol would need to move up the dates. Carol verbally walked through some modifications and we'll send around to the committee, which I think she did. She kinda had yellow and red different denoting, different sort of modifications. Uh, we had some discussion on not having a first selectman, but instead more of a chairperson, or they would still be first selectmen, but how I interpreted it at the time, um, it would be, uh, really the, the concept here is they would be, um, appointed from the Board of Selectmen as the first selectman, like the Board of Education and Board of uh, Finance. Bob shared language to the charter to make this modification in line with moving forward uh, from an elected to an appointed first selectman. Got it? So that's really, that was the key. Um, we didn't, there was no motion or anything on that one. Uh, increase the number of candidates allowed by the Board of Selectmen. The prior meeting, I had given some information on that. Uh, discussion on removing the limit of the number of individuals on the party. We discussed the possibility of changing the number of people, uh, an individual could vote for. Um, and then I wrote a note, hold this issue until of first selectman or chairperson concept appointed by the board itself resolved. Uh, town clerk position, uh, and this new trigger for town referendum, we didn't go for, we didn't, we didn't really get into because Adrian wasn't there. Public speak we had, and then Jeff and Bob adjourned. So those were essentially the minutes.
The only thing I wanted to ask thirty is about putting in that paragraph that I, well, that sentence that I suggested for section one zero zero eight. Review and amendment of the charter giving us minimum amount of time for doing that. I know we tossed it back and forth. Um.
Yeah, so you, yeah, I think you brought that up in public speak. Which was a great idea. So you're suggesting that we consider that as a new item? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So, you know, if that were included in the, in the minute, so I'm just asking that that be added to.
Uh, let me jump in here. I mean, yeah, we mentioned that and we kicked it around considerably during public speak. And then we said, okay, we're gonna circle around and put this in, in the discussion and possible action, uh, line item, and then we never did. So.
Bob, to that end, actually, um, because I was working on the percent to referendum and automatic referendum vote stuff. Um, and I also know there was some discussion three, pretty previously regarding, um, um, you know, uh, minor, minor ordinances, major ordinances, and, um, emergency ordinances. I included, I just sent everybody a document that has um, it has the how it's held in, in a couple of towns, mostly though, that's, that's a Hebron document, um, in how they, their wording is much, much cleaner than our charter is, um, regarding um, sending something to, you know, petitioning as well as, um, how the, how the ordinance is held. Uh, you know, how you, how you trigger the meeting and also emergency ordinances. So, um, I would, I would think we, we might wanna actually just consider literally copying and pasting that into our section, cause it's way.
Okay.
Bob, I recommend, we, I'd recommend that we, we adopt, we, we motion to accept these minutes and, and add Carol's item as a sort of to this block of business as sort of part of new business.
Yeah, you're echoing what I was about to say. You just jumped in before I could. And the same thing, Adrian. So yeah, let's, let's get the, uh, the, the minutes out of the way and then go to the next item where we can accommodate these things. So are there any, uh, other, can you? I guess you don't need to bring the minutes back onto the screen. Are there any other discussions, contributions, changes, revisions that anybody sees necessary in the minutes? Somebody wanna make a motion to accept them?
I'll make a motion to accept with the one month. Your notes on it, right, last, uh, it's about section. I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Um, with adding, making that one correction, adding, uh, that sentence that I, we discussed last week. Or adding to section one zero zero eight.
Under the public speak.
Under the public, right.
Right, okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Yes, then why not sit there and put everybody in public speak? I, I'm just saying, Carol, I mean, just from a simple standpoint, I know you brought it up in public speak, but is that the only part of public speak we're gonna put in the minutes?
Bring the minutes back up, Jody.
No, 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 we don't have to. I'm just, I mean, I make a comment, there's no other issues on public speak in the minutes.
No, I, I just thought we discussed it after public speak. When we were in our meeting part.
No, we discussed it in public speak. Uh, I think Jeff, perhaps the only reason to memorialize it is because it was significant enough that we spent ten or fifteen minutes kicking that one idea around. And it seems like something that is now migrating into the general agenda. So it seems substantial enough.
Put it in. If we had an agenda, we would make an addition to bring it up into new business and sit there and say, I mean, I know we have an agenda, but we don't have any items on it. We don't have additions, deletions, probably a special meeting, Carol. I don't know, but it's fine, just approve the minutes and with Carol's addition. But I'm just saying, if I'm someone like Shannon and I spoke in public speak and you're not putting anything else in public speak. I would be semi-concerned and it would be problematic to me. So uh, uh, um, let's just vote.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, carries six zero zero.
Abstain, abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, Carol, from an administrative perspective, can you add that sentence to the document I sent and then publish?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go on to the catch-all agenda item. Discussion and possible action upon any charter revision issue. Um, before we get into some of the details, I just wanted to, uh, kinda confer with everybody, where are we vis a vis the schedule for getting this all done? I know at the first meeting we talked about how the schedule seemed pretty tight. We only had a certain number of meetings. We needed to get this presented. We needed to get a draft over to the Board of Selectmen before a certain amount of time. There was some discussion about, uh, going back to the Board of Selectmen and extending the schedule. Was that ever done, Jeff?
Yes, we extended it out for an extra two weeks or a little bit more than two weeks. So it's about the twenty-second of July.
Twenty-second of July is when we need to get the, the draft.
Oh, well, the hope is that we get the draft to them a lot sooner than this. I mean, the issue that I look at is we've had issues with the town attorney. The town attorney is not present at our meeting. He's got some personal issues he's dealing with, but hopefully what we can do is just address all the items, get the, the details laid out and then provide it back to him so that he can sit there and do the legalese for us and then hand it back to everybody so that we can read it at future meetings and move on quickly.
So sooner is better.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any have, have any questions about that? Um, we mentioned the public speak, cause I had made a note to myself that we should come back to that. Um, just again, touching base on things, Carol and I still need to get together on the formalized, itemized list of, of what the items are and, uh, so maybe early next week, we can do that. Um, and at some point, we're going to take all of, uh, the, each member's changes and incorporate them into a single document, obviously. Um, right now, we've got a lot of things floating around, and I guess that's, that's something that Carol and I will be looking at also. All right, those, that's just some bookkeeping things that I had, uh, made notes of. Uh, that brings us to, uh, the things that we didn't talk about last week are Adrian's things. Adrian, we're grateful to have you back. Um, there were two items that you had, uh, volunteered to look at, the the town clerk position and the supplemental appropriation amount. So take it away in any order that you want.
Yeah, so actually, uh, on my notes, I had, had that, I had three. Um, percentage of referendum um, to automatically, percentage of budget to automatically go to referendum. Um, uh, dollar amount, um, or percentage for referendum, you know, uh, for uh, people discussing it, you know, uh, sorry, petitioned, um, in the, uh, in the town clerk language. Um, so basically, I mean, I'll get the, I think the easiest one to get off the table is the town clerk language. Um, and you know, again, I, I have looked at this in most towns, you know, contrary to, to our public speak, most towns, um, are going to an appointed position for a variety of reasons. Um, it's just, uh, it, it's become such a, a busy position and a, in a professional position, it really, it's really where it belongs. You would not want to elect someone and then, um, give them four years and to, to learn the position and then you, they start over. Someone, someone else could then come in and start it over. So at any rate, it really is a non-political position. So, um, I looked at the language in four different chargers and what I'm finding is that, um, most folks do not reference state statutes directly because there are so many of them. Um, they generally now are with an appointed position. They have some sort of transition language if it was recent. So I put in some transition language there for us, which basically says that, um, you know, the, uh, the, whoever is the elected town clerk, when this transition happens, if they're still in the position, when the next, the end of their term comes, they would then become the appointed town clerk if they so choose. Um, and otherwise they would, the, the town would follow the procedures that are set forth. Um, by statute to, you know, to, um, to notify the Secretary of State that they're gonna appoint someone and then go through the process of hiring. Now, in our in our current town charter, we already have a section, section O, which was reserved for uh, the town clerk's position, it were, it's become in a, a, a town employee position. So I gave you language to put into that section and basically it just copies the other positions that are protected in the charter currently. Um, that the Board of Selectmen would appoint a town clerk. They have all the duties and powers conferred by Connecticut statute. The appointment will come from the highest candidate chosen on the basis of competitive examination. Office would have a permanent status. The officer shall be compensated on a salary basis only. Town clerk will be a town employee. Subject to all rules and provisions personnel qualities. Removal of the town clerk must be for just cause. And it must be confirmed by a four-fifths vote, eighty percent of the entire Board of Selectmen. Um, and that makes the policies we already have in the charter for other positions, our charter. Um, and you know, really, most other town charters um, really don't even address it at this point. It through various revisions, um, you know, Columbia, um, Hebron is going through the process again now. So I borrowed some of their language for the transition language. Um, but mostly the other town charters do not even really address it, just saying that it's a, it's an appointed position. That's it. So. Questions on that?
I would put forward a motion that we move to have our town clerk appointed. Following, I haven't reviewed the language, but the general concept I think is to have an appointed town clerk.
I would second the motion.
Further discussion?
So the assumption is that the language or the, the bullet points, Adrian, that you're addressing are going to be addressed by the town attorney and the language specified out. So everybody is clear with what we're talking about?
I actually sent, uh, everyone should have in their email the language, um. But yes, it is, uh, I, I sent it out just as the meeting was starting. I apologize. And I will say, if anyone feels the need to edit, I sent it as a Word doc. Unfortunately, my, um, my, my abilities to edit have been greatly reduced. Um, I mostly have to use a, a voice, uh, a voice to text type program right now. So it's, um, I haven't quite figured out how to edit really well with it. So and he helps appreciate if somebody feels the need. But I, I basically followed our town charter and just, you know, addressed it the same, the literally cut and paste language from what we already have and then filled in from other, other town stuff.
So what you're saying is you took the town administrator language and rolled it into.
No, we have actually one in there for the assessor um, and a couple of other positions that are, that are mimicking, mimicking that language exactly. As far as.
Seven oh two.
Seven oh two, yes, thank you. And we already had a section reserved for it, seven oh two, and it's O, section O. At the very bottom of the document I sent.
I don't have the whole charter open in front of me. Do we have for those other hired positions like the assessor and the town administrator? Do we have additional language on what has to happen to get rid of them? I mean.
Yes, yeah, I copied that exactly.
Okay. Right, removal, okay, for just cause, yeah, four fifths, gotcha. I just opened the document also.
Yep.
Okay.
I apologize for the late. It took me unfortunately a long time to put that together.
Oh, it's great that you had this. Okay, so you're, you're echoing the existing language for other hired positions.
Yes. Hired administrative position, yes.
Yeah, that's consistent. Any other question or discussions? So we have a motion to accept this and seconded. Let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstaining.
Carol's abstaining. Adrian, are you voting yes or no?
I, I, aye, yes.
Yes. Uh, all opposed? Okay, yeah, I see.
I, I really think that, um, as Sharon said, have it open to the public. The elected position.
All right, so we have a vote of four, one, one. One abstention, one opposed, four, uh, agreeing. So the motion carries. Okay, so that will be included in our list of items to move forward. Thank you, Adrian. And the other items I see are also in your document here.
Yes, so, um, I, I brought over some stuff on, you know, basically, again, Hebron's is much cleaner on how they address their hearings. Um, they basically use a two percent, um, two percent electors, um, as the requirement, and then they have a, you know, they have a, a timeline. Um, I basically used that and then put in the timeline that we'd all talked about. Um, at our, on our previous meeting that I was at. So, um, but otherwise the document is, is fairly, fairly straightforward as far as, um, it, it gives a, a progression. You know, how do you trigger it? You know, how do you, how do you trigger petition town meeting? How do you? You know, how long does the ordinance hold over? Exactly. All that is addressed. It's pretty, pretty much what we had talked about. Um, they're just, their language is cleaner and I put in, um, um, I put in, um, the totality of it, cause I felt like it just, it's so much cleaner how it, it played, everything just, it's very concise. How it's noticed, where it's noticed, how long it's noticed for. So.
I'm sorry, what was that for? Uh, referendum?
Yes, percentage, uh, percentage, um, the, sorry, the, um, percentage to trigger, um, to trigger a special petition to then go to a town meeting slash referendum.
So you're, you're suggesting we follow Hebron's language and Hebron's percentage? Is that right?
Um, I looked around and, and most towns are kinda right at that two percent mark. So, yes. Seems to be the consensus that two percent is the trigger. So.
Jeff, you're muted.
Hey, um, Adrian, what time did you send out that email? Because I cannot find it. I'm looking at town email address. I'm looking at my office business email address.
Can't pull up that other screen right now?
Someone look at the email address and, and just see if I'm included or I'm.
It was just before the meeting, though.
Yeah, I got it at six oh four.
Okay, so it's just, sorry.
But I think you B C C'd, cause I don't see any other, uh, email addresses.
Well, oh, yeah.
I tried to have reply, oh, I'm so sorry.
Can you send it to me?
Yeah, I think you just sent it to me, Adrian.
Bob, is it possible for you to report it to everybody? It just, uh, for me to switch screens is.
Sure, uh.
That's fine.
Okay.
And, and um, listen, I, I had been looking at the, the language on Hebron as well and that language is acceptable to, to, to sit there and go forward as far as referendum goes, because there's two different issues. It's like, what is the um, what is a special media, a special town meeting gonna be called for, Adrian? Like, what would it be called for?
So it can, I mean, technically, it can be called for anything that is deemed appropriate within our charter. So we, you know, um, I would have to go through our charter to find the sections that references it specifically, but it can be, it can be purchase of town properties, it can be, um, it can be, in this case, repeal of an ordinance that was, that was passed that they just, that the town folks may disagree with. Some charters specifically, um, list everything and some say, um, have a little bit more uh, vagueness in it.
Okay, and the, the reason why I was looking at that section, especially for referendum, was related to ordinance.
Right, or, or, ordinance is addressed in this specifically as a hold. I know, and then, and then if it goes to the, it goes to a special meeting and it says that it has to pass by a certain percentage, then it automatically is effective as of the next day of the meeting.
Okay. Uh, I'll need to see it because for my end, it's the reasons why and trying to avoid calling of special town meetings and having the additional cost and additional, eh, time required to sit there and get to those town meetings and to maximize the number of residents that are participating. So that was the goal that what you missed last week, at least with the ordinance issue, was to get it to a referendum so that the majority of the town voters will participate.
Right.
So.
Okay, so, so should be hitting your inbox.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
So, so to that end, I guess the two things that we probably should try to look at is does our charter have provisions specifically for what a town meeting has to, has to, or can be called for? Right?
Yes, and, and it does, and the goal, and Carol, I'm, will know more even than I do, but what I'm sitting there after is if we, the goal, the, on my section, the goal was the ordinances were drafted by the, the Board of Selectmen and then the referendums would be called strictly for the ordinances. We have nothing, Carol, in our charter, related to referendum calling right now. It's just special town meetings.
Right, exactly. So, right, so that, actually is the third thing that you asked me to look at is um, automatic dollar amount to going for referendum and, um.
Hmm, that was, was that going to referendum or going to town meeting? Because now we're confusing. We got the whole, we got the whole pot confused.
We already, we, we already have, we already have a provision that a town meeting happens with a, it was, it's like one half a percent or something. So.
Correct, and we were looking at increasing that number, so.
To fifty thousand, yeah.
That's still one half percent of the number, and it's not even one half percent of the number. So are we sticking it a half? Are we trying to say we're gonna stick it a half percent? Are we gonna go two percent? Are we gonna go to a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I would rather it be a flat number than anything percentage-wise, because then people understand it.
Yeah, we had discussed, uh, we had discussed, I mean, I went back to the minutes that we had had previously from two meetings ago. Um, and that's what I, um, but anyways, I think that number should be, um, you know, that should be somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand. From what I can see, um, most towns, most towns actually are just not doing the town meeting part of it. They go straight to referendum on, on, on these things. So they, they give their Board of Finance more leeway to, to do things on the lower end and then when it breaks a, when it breaks a threshold, they kick it. You know, they have a, a set hold, um, whether it's a half a percent. when it breaks a threshold, they kick it, you know, they have a set hold, um, whether it's a half a percent or or one percent, where they automatically kick it to referendum, they do not go to a town meeting, they just go straight to referendum and they're done with it.
So, just so I am I, listen, if you want to say two hundred thousand dollars and you want to try to go at that, that's fine, I think the current number currently, right? And and I'm just going to do basic math for everybody. And Carol, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's the budget less RAM. So, it's somewhere in the range of, of eight million dollars, and I'm just going to round the numbers, because I always look at four, four and four, so eight million dollars. Times point zero zero five is forty thousand dollars.
Right.
That's the current number as established, it's a really incredibly low threshold, so basically, everything gets to town meeting at the budget for the most part. And it's forty thousand dollars, so if the number's two hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's two point five percent. Is that right? Am I right? Eight million dollars, Bob? My zero point zero two five, two hundred thousand dollars, two and a half percent.
Hey, I want to jump in here a second and completely take a right turn on this, Adrian, you're what you're submitting here is stuff that we covered three meetings ago, and that we all agreed to move forward. It was the, it was the meeting that, um, that Eric Anderson was here. We talked about dollar amounts and percentage amounts, three oh four A and B, and, uh, and the notes that I have here, what we wanted you to do was you had talked about that we needed a dollar amount for supplemental appropriations that would trigger a referendum vote, not revisiting everything that Eric and I had already done. So I'm a little confused what we're doing.
Well, Bob, I don't remember voting on what you and Eric had done, so did we vote on that? Because I don't remember voting on any numbers, any percentages, any dollars.
We just discussed it, so far, we've just been discussing most everything, we haven't really.
Voted on, very, voted on a couple of things, Carol.
I'm just a couple of things.
Pretty sure that we voted on that.
Yeah, it was fifty, Bob, it was fifty thousand dollars is what you guys had put up.
Yeah, fifty thousand dollars, well, that was.
And and the question was, what's the number to trigger an automatic referendum? And the answer I'm I'm giving you is two hundred thousand, if you want a different number, go for it.
No, no, that's, okay, I mean, we didn't have any language as near as I understood to automatically trigger a referendum.
I proposed, I proposed a motion, I proposed a motion, it did not go, and then you guys suggested that I should come up with a number that everyone could because we were kicking around different numbers, and that was, I guess, the consensus that it wasn't clarified, I should forget some clarification. So that's what I'm trying to put on the table now.
Yeah, where, so we have a section in, section three oh four is special town meetings, and section three oh four.
We don't have, we don't have one that skips and goes to referendum, we do not.
Got it, so this is a sort of a fresh issue you're working on, which is, when does something go to referendum?
Right, it was two meetings ago when we were talking about, um, the issues that Bob were just discussing, it was after Eric, but, um, it was amongst everyone that was here. Eric was not, and Eric was not at that particular meeting.
Okay, and then I'm, I'm going to sit there and say that I'm, I need some clarification, because there are issues in our town meeting procedure, um, as to percentages and dollar figures in the document. Actually, just percentages, there's no dollar figures. Can we vote on that? Because I would like to understand, like, that's what I thought we were coming back to. Is any supplemental appropriation, it's, it's two, the three oh, three oh four B.
Yeah, that's for town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting.
And then, and then I think we need to, we need to think about them in concert too, right? The notion of what goes to meeting, what goes to referendum.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I think it's, I think it's, it is sort of a collective issue.
What, you're saying, Bob, you changed to what percent?
So, at the meeting with Eric.
One thing, but but we're talking about this, I'm just saying, I don't remember voting on anything like this.
We did, because I've got a note of it, it was, uh.
Okay.
What meeting date was it? I would have captured the motion.
Okay, so let's express three oh four B, what, what, because Adrian, we haven't eliminated the town meeting, so if what would ever get to two hundred thousand dollars if we set the, the special town meeting supplemental appropriation and even one percent, even one percent is not going to get to the two hundred thousand dollars, so, um.
I was bringing this up specifically, and what started the back and forth is I, you know, I pointed out that the tractor passed you know, by eight votes, and that seventy six people decided basically to spend nearly, you know, nearly a mill on a tractor, and it's, and I, and I have a problem with that, and I brought this up and you guys said, well, they come up with a number.
Got it, so your, your suggestion, so it does make sense that one would be higher than the other, right? You're, he's sort of bringing it to, in your thinking, Adrian, bringing it to town referendum is bringing it directly to everyone in the town.
Right, when you, when you start spending a certain amount.
Quick town, you know, the Board of Selectmen can do up to whatever, and then it goes to a town meeting, might be the next threshold, whether that's that point five, or Jeff is, I think, suggesting maybe something higher. And then you were kind of saying two hundred thousand could be, that's when everyone in the town should have a voice.
Yes.
Got it, I mean, simple guy here, but maybe up, and and I'm just spitballing here, you know, maybe up to a hundred thousand dollar. It would be appropriate for some wiggle room for the people we've elected to do supplemental work, and then and then anything over two hundred thou, you know, anything over that hundred thousand needs to go to a town meeting, and then anything over two hundred might need to go to the, the referendum.
So on June fourth, we did vote, so, go for special town meetings. So, A, the issuance of bonds exceeding fifty thousand. B, exceed, exceeding one percent. Uh, we kept C, we kept D, and then E, leases, we put in a dollar amount of in excess of fifty thousand. F, um, zero point two five, which that is exactly the same as it currently is.
Right, what did we say for B, Carol?
For B?
One?
Yes.
Okay, so we got it, we're close to eighty thousand, we, we upped it.
Right, we upped that one, and then, um, and G, the application, um, for any in kind, we upped that to twenty five thousand from the current twenty five hundred, and that was that's motion to modify, was Adrian seconded by Jeff and Carrie Minus.
God, I'm, I'm losing my mind.
Yeah, now, I I remember that, that this was Bob and Eric, they kind of redlined, they brought it up, they walked us through it.
It's the first thing that we covered.
Jeff, you, so five years from now, when we see these dollar values, are we going to be going, what were those people thinking? Why aren't they doing percentages? No, I, I, I just think, I mean, I think it's just easier to do a round number.
So, so people can read it and understand when it goes. I see, Pat, you're, you're nodding your head, that makes sense to you too, real numbers? Unfortunately, we didn't do that with the other one, we did one percent, but with Adrian suggesting what goes to a town referendum, he's suggesting a flat dollar, okay.
And, and just so we're clear, Adrian, the, the, what we passed on the tractor, which you're upset about, is a five year commitment for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment at one time.
That's not the point.
Is it an annual, is it an annual commitment, or is it a long term commitment?
No, it's, it's, it's the same, I would use the same language we're using for the other, um, so for instance, we have a we, we agreed on language for, you know, grant money, right? So, with grant money, it's not, you're shaking your head, do we not agree on language?
No, 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 I'm shaking my head over things in the back of my head, I'm like going, I need, I mean, Bob, we need a list of things that we did approve or not approve, like a, a running list, I mean, I'm just in my head going, there's a, a few things, Adrian, that, um, I'm not clear on in my mind, like I understand what you're saying now, I do understand what you're saying now, and I understand what Bob is saying now, we're sitting, we're sitting, town meeting, town meeting. Town meeting is one percent of anything over one percent for a supplemental appropriation, right now would go to town meeting, so that in essence is eighty thousand dollars. And, and what you're trying to sit there and say here is anything that, that maxes, that is a total commitment of two hundred thousand dollars for the town has to go to refer, straight to referendum.
Right, no town meeting, straight to referendum, call it a day.
These are supplemental, unbudgeted, right? That's the.
Exactly, exactly.
How, you know, Jeff, how often are these, like, is this rare? Is this, is it always happening, it's just a dollar, dollar value?
It's a little more frequently.
It's not frequently, but it.
Have we not done, have we not done one almost every year?
Name it, go ahead.
I'm saying, haven't we done one almost every year?
No.
Community center.
Tractor, listen, we.
Community center, tractor.
We did the tractor.
Bridge.
What are you talking about? We didn't spend any money on the bridges.
We originally, we originally did actually have to commit money for funding, because you have to put money in, and then we ended up getting we ended up getting a hundred percent grant, but that originally we did not.
The only, the only, the only legitimate supplemental appropriation is the tractor. And, and when I say supplemental, I am talking a not an infrastructure issue that the town is really committed to, it's, it's something that we did that was an equipment issue that we had to sit there and go do, right? Most of these, Adrian, and you will admit, will come up during the budget cycle, this one.
They, they should come up, I agree they.
A supplemental.
Should, I agree they should.
So then the two, so what Adrian's suggesting doesn't sound like an undue burden, we're not, you know, maybe once a year, once every three years, we might go if something's needed in the town, and the leadership goes, gosh, this didn't hit the budget cycle, we need something. It's a little bit of protection for the town outside the buy, outside the budget process, where, um, um, you know, there, there's some, you know, voice of the town, if there's a higher dollar item.
Right.
Correct, and it went, this individual, this one went to town meeting, right, went to town meeting. It was a well attended town meeting and got voted in a different direction that Adrian is looking at. I will tell you, if I'm on that board, I'm on the board, I would never put that up for a supplemental. The only reason this even went up, Jody, was because there was an opportunity to get a tractor that was sitting there, and then if we waited till past June, we would never have gotten, so that's the only reason, so.
So, so you're spending two and a half percent of our budget without any voice from the no, sorry, you allowed, you had the town come to a meeting, and how many people in town attended?
Seventy six.
Seventy six?
One of the better attended town meetings I've seen.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the concept of, I mean, I don't, maybe it's five hundred thousand dollars, but there shouldn't be a concept where something big is going to happen. I don't know what the threshold is.
Right.
You need more of the town than, than.
And I guess, and I guess, you know, I, Jeff disagrees with me on this, and that's fine, but my issue is if the new meeting was noticed, it was on short notice, but even once it was noticed, there was no packet on the town website that had all the information. You got it, literally, you got a packet at the meeting, because there was nothing available online, there was no, none of the competitive stuff that was given to the Board of Selectmen was provided. It wasn't even in the, in the packets, so people went to a meeting uninformed and made a decision based on what people said at a meeting and unfortunately are, well, I'm not going to get into it.
Adrian, those are legitimate concerns, but they're really separate from what we're discussing here right now.
Right, but my point is, there is a reason for having this, and it's really just about getting, giving the townsfolk more of a participation.
Okay, I don't understand, exactly, so let me, let me just play stupid here, so by having the town meeting, we, I mean, that was the way that the decision was made, that's our legislative body. And at the same time, we were soliciting discussion and input, so we could see how people in real time were, uh, were responding to this. Now, if you're talking about for large dollar amounts, going to referendum, going to a vote, is that going to be following a town meeting? Is it going to be following a?
Nope, straight to referendum.
Or is there going to be some vehicle for soliciting public feedback before we go to the referendum?
Well, the referendum is public feedback, right? The, the, just like on anything else.
It's one directional, it's not interactive the way that it's.
You'd need, you'd need a public hearing, you would need a public hearing to discuss.
But the Board of Selectmen has the public hearing on these things, right? So does the Board of Finance, and then they send it to a town meeting.
You mean to referendum, you're talking about skipping.
I'm saying currently, currently, we do that and then go to a town meeting, right?
Right, but you're saying.
You would do that and go, you'd skip the town meeting, go straight for referendum, and the reason being, is that a referendum? If I'm correct, Carol, is open from what, eight AM to eight PM or or six AM to eight PM?
Six AM to eight PM, we could change it noon to eight PM.
So, so instead of town folks getting five days' notice to show up at an in-person meeting at seven o'clock on a Tuesday, they can actually stop in throughout the day, and at any point during that day, after they drop their kids off at school, before they bring their kids to soccer practice, before they, we have a lot of elderly folks that don't want to drive in the evening. You know, there's a lot of reasons for doing this, and most of it are around participation, that's all it is.
And they can also get absentee ballots, so I do agree with Adrian, giving the public more of a chance to voice their opinion. They can, they have, referendums usually happen under three weeks' notice, but absentee ballots are available, so you have more of the voice of, rather than limiting them to that one night, you know, a couple hour meeting if they do have prior. Yeah, a lot of times Adrian is correct, is in the short notice, and this past one that we had the end of April was extremely short.
It's interesting, Carol, that you would use the, the, the language, giving the public a voice, because I see the referendum by itself as less of a voice, it's a one directional, yes, you can get more people involved, but there's less of the, the interactive that there is in the town meeting, and that's why I was asking. Now, before this town meeting, was there a special hearing? Or did this just go?
There was nothing, it just, um, we just sent the notices out the week before, on that Monday, and then the meeting was following.
Right, so you would need to have a public hearing before going to referendum?
Would not, you could, our charter said that if the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance were looking for a supplemental appropriation, and let's say that we use Adrian's two hundred thousand for the threshold, if it was two hundred and fifty, then it would automatically be forced to go to referendum.
But if, Bob, if that's what you're looking for, I can figure out language for that, to say that, you know, for dollar amounts over this amount, we'll have a, you know, the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance, the, you know, that, that's asking for this, would have to have a public hearing, and then it would go directly to referendum once they, they conclude that hearing.
I don't know that we're really achieving anything by doing that two step process versus a public hearing, versus a, a, a town meeting. Excuse me. You know?
No, you're definitely, you're definitely accomplishing something, you know, you're accomplishing something. I mean, I have no problem with what Adrian is requesting, what I'm trying to do is get the logistics of the numbers. So if I have a one percent for a town meeting, I have forty, I have, I have eighty thousand dollars, right? Eight, and I'm just going to use that number, so what Adrian is saying, anything, any supplemental appropriation between eight, currently in our charter, the way our charter is, eighty thousand dollars goes to town meeting. Anything in excess of two hundred thousand dollars goes directly to referendum. I, I don't have a problem with that, and Bob, I don't have a problem with saying before it goes to referendum, you have to hold a public hearing, put it in the document, put it in the charter, hold a public hearing before it goes to referendum, and then let everybody vote on it if you choose to. That, that, that's, there's nothing wrong with what he's, what Adrian is suggesting. What I'm, and what I'm trying to do is, what is the, what are the numbers that we're talking about here? So we're talking eighty thousand dollars, and and above goes to a town meeting, anything between eighty thousand and one ninety nine goes to a town meeting. Anything above one ninety nine, nine nine nine. Anything above one ninety nine, nine 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 goes to a referendum.
Yes.
How about it? I mean, it's a, it's a. I, I, I would sit there and say, I, I don't have a problem with something like the tractor going to a referendum. I have a problem with roadwork or something along that lines, but that wouldn't be a supplemental appropriation. That would be in the budget. Right? This, this, this item with the tractor was a total off issue. So. I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I don't. So, but those are the numbers. The numbers are eighty thousand dollars.
Have, you have language for a new refer, town referendum section in, in that section.
I can put, I can put together language for this. I did not.
Okay.
Put it together yet because it was, again, it was this kind of discussion last time. And there was not a consensus, so I didn't want to, I was trying to focus on getting the other things done with the limited amount of time that I had available. So if, if, Bob, are you, are you yay or nay on this?
No, I, you know, like I said, I. I think it's important for the town to have a voice in it. And by a voice, I mean. The interactive process for either a, uh, you know, a special hearing or a town meeting. Um, it seems like we're going to a two-step process here. Where the town, special town meeting is kind of a one-step process. So in that regard, it's two things we have to schedule. It's twice the expense to the town, but if.
No, because the hearing, the hearing could be at a, a, a regular board of selectmen meeting. It doesn't have to be.
You know, granted, okay. You know, from a logistical standpoint, I agree with that.
Public hearing doesn't cost any money.
You have to notice.
Meeting, the town meeting costs money because you have to check everybody's license and we have to pay for the registrar voters to be there and. So, town, town, public hearing, no problem.
You have to notice it though. I mean, that's.
We noticed, Carol, Carol notices every board of selectmen meeting and we have five people show up.
Okay, I'm good with it, you know?
Jody, thoughts?
I'm on board. I like the stepped approach, right? We, we're trying to give our elected leaders a little bit more latitude. We increased it from half to one percent. That's a step, maybe not enough, but that's done business. And this is kind of like anything between, you know, that hat, one percent, two hundred thousand is a town meeting. And then anything over two hundred thousand, really, everyone in town's gonna, you know, has, has an opportu. It, it's, it's that referendum. So yes, I'm, I'm fine with sort of this stepwise approach.
Yeah, I'll work on the language for the next meeting and I, I will apologize in advance for giving you short on this. But I will hopefully be in a better place this coming week and I'll, I'll get this to you much sooner.
Okay, that's great, Adrian. What you've done is, is terrific. Some good ideas here.
Uh, let's go back. Are we voting on this or not?
Are we ready to vote?
Because to me, because to me, language, language is. I, I'm not an attorney and there's a reason why we have a town attorney in my head. So I'm not an attorney, but I am understanding. Are you wanting to wait on this until Adrian proposes language? Is that the goal, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Then let's have something here that we can all look at, that we can look at more than, you know, two minutes before we're trying to vote on it, so we can digest it.
I will, I will get it to everybody, um, the, at least Monday before next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay. Um, so we had started three weeks ago, four weeks ago with a list of, of items. Which, yes, I haven't, I haven't circulated which things we've checked off, but we have gone through, made a first pass. At everything and we've circulated around. There's been a lot of documents flying around with everybody's changes. I think what needs to happen now is for Carol and I to put all these things together into one attachment. That we can all look at next week, go through quickly and say, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean. I have that we have voted on most of these things already, but we need, I think we need to see them all in context and together. And that should be what we do next week because we've done a first pass on everything at this point.
I, I mean, I know in my head, we've talked about everything. I just don't know which ones we voted on and which ones we approved. So I do remember Eric in a discussion of one percent. I do remember that, I, you know. And, and I think the logic of voting on that was, it's, as Jody said, an increase, but. It's not an excessive increase, but what Adrian's language is now breathing, breathing to us, it's, it's eighty thousand dollars. For a town meeting. And two hundred thousand dollars for a town referendum. Logic, so let's go, common sense.
Okay, that's everything that I had for us to discuss. All the items, like I said, it's, it's up to Carol and I to kind of get this all together so that we can look at it in context together. And, uh, that's where we're gonna go.
Then is there some structure to send this to the board of selectmen? I, I, the town attorney, I think, talked about different items in different ways, right? So I know there's a process and maybe this, Jeff, this is something for you to opine on, but I think, you know. Is it a yay or nay? We like these or there are seven changes and they could vote. Uh, they could approve or deny seven, one through seven. So there could be a partial acceptance. I don't, I don't. I don't a hundred percent recall that process.
Well, Carol and, Carol and Patricia were on the, the last charter revision commission. So they understand that there's a draft report that's gonna go in front of the board of selectmen and, and if I remember the last draft, there was. Uh, three or four items and we approved all, all the items that were on that draft. But I would assume that we would go through the same process. We would get to a point where we're comfortable with what we're. The points we're trying to move forward with. You'd give it to the town attorney. The town attorney would come back with language that would be appropriate for the. For the state of Connecticut and then it would go to the board of selectmen and the board of selectmen is gonna. Either approve the draft or not approve the draft and then it would come back to us, Carol, correct, for.
We do have to have a public hearing once we, once we feel that we're complete. Public has an additional chance for their input before we send.
Okay.
Couldn't, couldn't hear the last few things you said there, Carol.
I'm sorry, so we have to have a public hearing once we're, we feel that we're done. We made. All of our motions voted on what we're gonna send forward to the board of selectmen. We have another public hearing. And then that public hearing, someone may. Present something and we may want to modify before we send it to. So. And then they would decide whether or not to send all of the items that we have sent forward. As questions for charter change.
And Carol, before that public hearing, did you have the draft completed with the town attorney, like the language? That you were potentially sending to the board of selectmen?
Did not, no.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we complete a draft, we have a public hearing. We, we put that in front of the public. They, we solicit inputs. We may or may not edit the draft. And then we still submit it to the board of selectmen. They vote up, down, or sideways. They have the capability to make changes, send it back to us.
Well, I think, I don't think we have the ability. I mean, I'm speaking on the board of selectmen. I don't believe we have the authority to make changes. We can make recommendations back to you and where we can sit there and say, we don't approve this. Item in the draft. Right, we can't tell you what to do. It's just recommendations. Listen, we don't believe that this is good for the community. Please revise, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
But I'm assuming, I'm assuming though that, just my mind, this has to get to the town attorney. Sooner than later to have appropriate language.
It does. You have to have dentist language. And correct any mistakes that you may have made.
Technical things that, you know, because like first selectmen goes through the entire draft. If we decided to say something, first selectman is gone and we're gonna call it first select member, um. It goes through a lot of the pages of the draft of the charter. So anyway, uh, yes, sooner than later. So all of this sooner than later. So. The package would be great, Bob. I mean.
Okay, um, I think that's all of the discussion and possible actions that we have for this week. Um, anybody have anything that they want to throw in before we move on to the second public speak? Nope. Okay, so we're on to item five, public speak. Do you have any other members of the public here?
Zoom login, whoever that is.
I don't know.
Uh, hi, hi folks. Sorry I interrupted. My name is John Guskowski. I don't know if I've met some of you. I'm the town planner. Um, planning and zoning is actually waiting on this same Zoom feed. For some reason, the town only has one Zoom feed. So their meeting, which was supposed to start at seven, is, is, is waiting for you folks, but obviously you had it first, so take your time.
Well, we actually have two Zoom feeds and we're using the secondary one. That's the one that we were kind of assigned. Right from the start because there is primary.
Listen, listen, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Good job, Carol. I love you. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Unanimous? All right, thank you guys.
Thanks. Bye, everybody.
Yep.